Welcome to the final ceremonial council meeting of the 2019-2022 triennium. Sadly, we have apologies from councillors Chu, Gough and Koka. And so would someone like to move they be received? Sarah Templeton, seconded Jake McLoughlin. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no. That is carried. I will move on to the mayor's report. And sorry, I haven't got my board open. I wrote it. And so just the... There are two reports that make it up. The first report is the final monthly report. And it does slip into October, which is next week, which is my final week as mayor. And I have identified in that that I have a number of engagements in my final week, largely associated with the opening of the Antarctic season, which I think is kind of quite significant and important for the reason that being one of five international gateway cities to Antarctica creates a very special place in the world for us as a city. And it is an important element of our work that we do need to appreciate and understand going forward as well. And it does raise some serious issues too. Carbon footprint and how we tread lightly in that space will be a big issue going forward. And so there are many, many issues and challenges that lie ahead in that space. So I'm really grateful that I have the opportunity to be part of opening the season for one final time. And I'm thrilled that I think that we've got the Minister for Foreign Affairs coming down for the opening itself. So we're just waiting for final confirmation on that. So that's pretty exciting as well. And don't seem to hit my other report. And so, no, I don't want that one. Sorry, I'm just looking for the final... Yeah, and well, you can see the number of things that we've been to. But I didn't really want to focus on that. I just wanted to note that we've provided written feedback to our chief executive and that part of the discussions that we had was that I would include reference to our discussions in the final report. And I've done that and really just acknowledged that Dawn and the organisation have achieved a tremendous amount in the most challenging of circumstances. So and having to deal with business as usual as well as respond to the particular challenges that the years throughout has been acknowledged, I think, by everyone. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I'd like to move that we accept my... And just for Yanni's benefit, just to note the Greater Christchurch partnership report on social and affordable housing, which I know Yanni has really pushed on for some time. And it's a good outcome and there is a real commitment sitting in behind that to actually delivering across the Greater Christchurch partnership. So I wanted to acknowledge that. So I'll move the receipt of... Oh, hang on, wait a minute, because I've got the other report, which is attachment two. So and this serves by way of a final report and it means that my valedictory can be shorter than it might otherwise have been. But it focuses on a number of the issues and I won't repeat what I'm going to say in my valedictory. But I think that we've been through huge amount of challenges. The changes to the district plan, obviously the finances at the beginning, joining the Resilient Cities network, I think has stood us in really good stead. And I do recommend that we stay connected to that network into the future. The Port Hills fire, I've talked about the Antarctic gateway. I talked about some of the organisations, Christchurch NZ. I have, you know, sort of opined the frustration that I've had about not being able to get a single joined up development agency for the city, central government and local government together. And the way that I put it there was that rather than having development Christchurches, we set up to signal to government that we wanted to do things differently. And then they set up Otakaro. So they set up Otakaro without discussing that with us. The lack of a shared model remains, in my view, one of the great missed opportunities in the recovery. If we'd had a shared model, imagine if it had started off with seventy-five, twenty-five percent Crown Council ownership and then transitioned over time, ultimately ending up being a one hundred percent council-controlled organisation. Imagine the capacity that the city would have had if that had been able to be achieved. Regenerate Christchurch had an important role to play, but largely focused on the Otakaro Avon River corridor and the depth and breadth of the work that they've done in that space will play out into the future co-governance of that space. And the Otatahi Community Housing Trust, I always said we set that up so that we could get access to the rental subsidy, income-related rental subsidy. But actually, that's not the reason that I would set it up today. I think it's a very good model to have an organisation that's completely devoted to tenants in our social housing who are able to partner with the private sector and others and bring in those partners to future developments. The Christchurch Foundation I've named there, these are not all mine, they're just things that have happened in our time. That came about simply as a result of the government having quite an unrealistic expectation of what philanthropic donations would come our way after the earthquakes. And it was interesting, they set up the earthquake fund, the Canterbury earthquake recovery... I'm just trying to remember what it was called, but it was a...
CS.
Yes, yeah, advisor... Anyway, but they had a... They gathered money for the recovery, but there were people that made donations that never got a letter of thank you from the city because it wasn't a city-inspired fund. And so the Christchurch Foundation, you know, and I've used the example of what happened on March fifteen. I literally called Amy Carter, the chief executive, at ten o'clock at night and said, 'Could you?' She reached out to people in the banking sector, they came to the party, everyone helped. And finally, we were able to deliver a... An account which government trusted as well. So it was a... It became the official recipient of donations. The drinking water, that's been... And I've said in here, the rules did keep changing, the bar has kept getting higher. But I believe and will always believe that we did the right thing in owning the decision and not being forced to do it by the medical officer of health as it would have been at the time. And I believe that prioritising the program of works has stood us in good stead for what we still need to do in order to achieve it. I had hoped that we would be able to apply for an exemption in my time as mayor, but I'm hoping that it will still be before the end of this year, that the application will be lodged with Tomata Arawai. And of course, the terrorist attack, I've listed the actual resolution that we passed on that day. I've highlighted a couple of the long-term, the two other long-term plans that we were involved in. And I've ended with this, the fact that our city was listed in the top one hundred world's greatest places in Time Magazine last year. And I just like the way that they described it. They said, 'Our third annual list of the world's greatest places is a tribute to the people and businesses at the forefront of those industries who amid extraordinary circumstances found ways to adapt, build and innovate. It shines a light on ingenuity, creativity, revitalisation and reopenings in destinations across the world.' And that's our city, so. So I'd like to move the receipt of my report, seconded by Mike Davidson. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you. And now, I was just waiting, just one. And so now we'll move on to the valedictories and I'd like to invite councillor Galloway to...
Namihinui kia koto. I'd like to start with a joke, which I've told before, but it's a good one. So a kid comes to his father and says, 'I want to be a politician.' The father looks at him and says, 'Have you completely lost your mind? Are you a moron? Are you insane?' And the kid looks at him and says, 'Well, maybe not. There seems to be a few too many requirements.' Thankfully, when I told my family that I was, had been asked to run for council, they didn't react like that. They were very supportive and incredibly encouraging. And I'm very grateful for their ongoing support. So thank you, Megan and Hamish, and my son Sam and Matt. My good friends, I'd also like to thank for, whose loyalty I tested by asking them, delivering brochures, putting up signs, you know how it goes. Thank you. For all those others who worked behind the scenes to help me get elected, I'm very grateful. Thank you. And finally, to the people of Horswell who voted for me to be their representative around this table. Thank you. In my role as ward councillor for Horswell, there have been highlights. Securing the old Horswell library as a community-owned facility is one. It is now a hub of community activity in action. And I'd like to acknowledge the managers of that hub, Kerry and Kate, for their hard work and energy to make this happen. They have now employed a youth activator who will work to connect with young people in Horswell and understand their needs and how to best champion those for them. Establishing a student council amongst the Horswell primary schools has also been a highlight. Seeing the way these young people have worked together on issues that are... in Horswell and understand their needs and how to best champion those for them. Establishing a student council amongst the Horswell primary schools, um, has also been a highlight. Seeing the way these young people have worked together on issues that are important to them has been exciting. Watch out for a video that they are now producing to highlight the unsafe driving practices they see every day outside their schools and to plea to adults to be mindful of children's safety. It's very hard-hitting. However, I haven't achieved this without the amazing support of community board staff. Their willingness to get alongside and to make things happen has made my ideas, some, sometimes left-field, come to fruition. Thank you. But this also applies to our wider team here at council. Dawn and your team hugely appreciate the support and guidance that you've given me over the last six years. I see this relationship between elected members and staff as symbiotic. We can't do our work without them and they can't do their work without our leadership and guidance and resourcing. So, um, it has to be based on mutual respect and appreciation. Hopefully, that's something that will, um, continue to happen going forward. However, I sit around this table not only as a ward councillor, but also as a city councillor. And in this role, I have been privileged to work alongside talented, professional, passionate, hard-working and inspiring colleagues. I doubt many will know the hours of work some of you give to this role and the toll it takes. I have learnt so much from you all and will be always grateful for the wisdom, guidance and companionship I have experienced here. Some of the highlights for me as a city councillor have been the establishment of the Children's University. This programme has seen over one thousand children and their whanau experience the joy of learning through over fifty learning hubs throughout the city and wider area. This is a life-changing programme that opens up to children and whanau the opportunity to experience and connect with universities and to see themselves as part of that world. It is aspirational. The involvement of the library staff at Te Ranga and other sites has been critical to the success of this, of the Children's University. Thank you for all you've done. The establishment of Te Pāpākāri, the Youth Standing Committee, is another highlight of my time as a city councillor. The young people of this city now have a channel through which they can influence decisions, uh, made. This committee is tangible evidence that this council values their, um, their voice and must continue. The well-known saying, "A community grows strong when old men and women plant trees whose shade they will never sit under," has underpinned and guided my work as a city councillor. My hope is that my contribution to this city will have a long-lasting impact and I'll be forever grateful for this precious opportunity to invest in the people of Christchurch. I would like to take a time now to honour the legacy of those who are also stepping down. Jimmy, Andrew and Leanne. Jimmy, your work on the multicultural strategy has changed and will continue to change this city as diversity is valued and celebrated. Well done. Andrew, your activism and energy for Banks Peninsula, uh, will mean, it will take its rightful place as the crown of Otatahi. So, thank you. And Leanne, Justin Welby, Archbishop of Canterbury, in his sermon for the Queen's funeral said these words, "People of loving service are rarer in any walk of life. Leaders of loving service are still rarer. But in all cases, those who serve will be loved and remembered when those who cling to power and privileges are long forgotten. Your loving service to this city and its people will not be forgotten. Thank you for the opportunities you have given me and your guidance and leadership has inspired me." I'd like to finish with a blessing for you all. Mata atua, metuahi, naro tato, itiaki, amanaki. Amen. Amen.
The privilege of my role is that I get to, um, reply to each of you. And I have said on many occasions that councillor Anne Galloway is quite simply the nicest human being I've ever met in my entire life. Um, she's stepping down after serving as a, as a councillor, but she's just touched the service of what she's brought to this table. Um, in all the years that I've known her, I don't believe that I have heard her say a bad word about anybody else, ever. Um, her values have been to the fore of everything that she has done. Um, you've talked about Te Pāi Picari. Um, I, I, I took, uh, I, I went on to the website to find the actual phrase and the meaning. Um, and I found the story that sits in behind it, because I think it speaks to the values that you have brought to this role and what you've just said. Te Pāi Picari stands for the perch of fledglings and talks to how this committee is not only focused on the wants and needs of rangatahi youth, but also works from the tu'kana teina learning model. Tu'kana teina describes the relationship held between a younger and older family member, although it doesn't have to refer to family. The teina, younger person, has the tu'kana, tu'akana, um, older person for mentorship and guidance. However, the opposite relationship is equally as powerful with the tu'akana, um, receiving fresh perspective, energy and creative ideas from their teina. And through this committee, the council wants to impart knowledge to the next generation to lead well, make valuable decisions and encourage, uh, of active, uh, community participation. But it, it's that sense of reciprocity and that has been in everything that you have brought to this table. You've brought yourself here, um, your whole self and you've participated in that way and it's hugely valued. Um, you, you spoke about the Children's University. You can take that as your legacy. Um, it was a dream that was held, uh, by people in the Adelaide, uh, Christchurch Sister City relationship for a long time before I was the mayor, um, and you have delivered it. So, thank you. And I thank you on behalf of all the children who will benefit from their experience of the Children's, um, university. Um, you are definitely going to be missed. You have earned the trust and respect of the Horswell, um, community and the community of Christchurch. Um, thank you for your service, uh, to the city. And I'd like to present you. And the chief executive would like to present you with a. Now, the, I'm feeling bad because, of course, I haven't got things in order. So, I did want to put on the record, Catherine Chu's Record of Service, because, um, she has been, unfortunately, an apology for this, uh, final meeting. Catherine was elected to the council for the Ricton Ward on the Independent Citizens ticket in twenty nineteen. She's been, she had been a community board member for the three years before that. Her CV was absolutely astonishing. And I remember asking her how she could possibly have achieved so much when she was only twenty-three years old. Uh, and she started to explain it to me by telling me that she had started university when she was fifteen years old. And all of a sudden, the numbers started to fit into place. But clearly, she had extraordinary ability at a very, very young age. Um, Catherine announced earlier this year that she wasn't standing again. Um, she has said that she's keen to explore options outside of local government. You know, I think that attracting somebody of that age into local body politics is always a, a, a challenge. Um, and so, I did want to acknowledge her for putting herself forward. It isn't easy. Um, and then, um, but I do want you to join with me to acknowledge her service to her community, um, and to the city and wish her well for the future. Right, and the next valedictory is councillor Jimmy Chin.
Good morning, Mayor, her worship, Honourable Leanne Dazio, Deputy Mayor, Andrew Turner. My fellow councillors, Chief Executive, Dawn Basender, all the council officers, all the Christchurch residents, committee leaders, distinguished guests. Ladies and gentlemen, Kira Kumali. Otatahi Christchurch is a greater city with a greater people. As the first generation migrant settled in Christchurch with my wife and two daughters in nineteen ninety-six, I have been an elected member for fifteen years. Three years as a community board member in Ricton Wigan and twelve years, the first six years in Ricton Wigan, a councillor. And last six years, two terms, as the home bee, the councillors. So, I would like to take this opportunity to express my sincere appreciation to the people of Otatahi Christchurch for your long-term support, particular to all my constituents, home bee, Ricton and Horswell work, for trusting me and voting for me, uh, as the city councillor. As a local councillor over the past twelve years, I have been involved in many decisions. I'm delighted Te hapua Horswell Centre, Ricton Community Centre, High High Community Centre, all has been complete and delivered to the people for all those work. Also now, new Mata Tiki Home Bee Centre project, we are aware, will be open and delivered by October two thousand twenty-three. The other project, including the Horswell Jiangshin Road Extension Project, Major Cycle Road South Express, Section One, from Tempton to High High, Section Two, from High High Home Bee to Quavon Street, the Suckburn, will be delivered by the end of year and also by the end of next year. As a citywide councillor, the earthquakes, the Port Hill fires, the mosque attacks and the Covid pandemic have coloured the years of my public services. Regarding earthquake recovery, I have worked with the former mayor, Bar Parker, now our mayor, Leanne Dazio, and the former and existing councillors, focus on emergency response, welfare centre setup, share and distribute earthquake information, earthquake repair, rebuild and regeneration. So, some of the major, the project, you are all aware, so I don't want to repeat again. The other one, as the Chair of Council Multicultural Committee, I have taken a lead to establish a Christchurch multicultural strategy. So, this is the first major multicultural strategy in New Zealand in partnership with the Mana Fi'na'ua and has closely monitored its implementation as part of our commitment in helping Christchurch become a diverse, inclusive, harmonious and socially cohesive city. A Chair of the Council's International Relations Working Group for two terms, two thousand thirteen to nineteen, Yani, he was the, the deputy chair. We have been taking a lead to establish the International Relation Policy Framework and this framework was adopted by council in August two thousand nineteen. This high-level strategic framework integrated the resources, all the key stakeholders, focused on the vision that we were engaged with our region, nation and the world to enhance wellbeing in Otatahi Christchurch and grow an international relevant city. Also, as a Chair of Canterbury Waste Joint Committee and the Canterbury Regional Landfield Joint Committee, during this term, I have been taking a lead to focus on the vision of Canterbury as a sustainable region, working towards zero waste and a circular economy in response to the council's climate change strategy. With Eken together, there are total ten councils involved in the Canterbury Waste Joint Committee. So, now, I particularly would like to acknowledge my fellow councillor Anne Galloway. I'm so happy to working with you in several areas. And the first multicultural committee engagement working, uh, group, also climate change working group, as well as we are in the same community board, Horswell Home Bee Ricton Community Board for six years. I'm very impressed, your energy, smiling face, hardworking, care for the young people as well as care for the diverse community groups. Also, I would like to acknowledge our deputy mayor, Andrew Turner, for his, uh, leadership, always support our mayor, the Leanne, and also his energy and precisely thinking. He can pick up the, those are key points where we're beside it. So, I admire. But except the, the Leanne, I think, into and myself, we get involved, small diverse community, the groups, the events and the activities. I think probably you also agree. And also, I particularly would like to acknowledge our mayor, her worship, of the Leanne Dazio, for your outstanding leadership, experience, skills, hardworking, as well as your manner, your particular manner. And I'm also the, you know, particular, do appreciate you to support me to be the Chair of Multicultural Committee and the International Relations Working Group. Given opportunity can contribute to the people of Otatahi Christchurch, I do appreciate. So, the, this is part of my lifelong, uh, journey. And the vision of the council strategic framework, Otatahi Christchurch is a city of opportunity for all. We're open to new ideas, new people, new ways of doing things, a city where anything is possible. Plus, when we review, we have so many, uh, the council strategy, like council multicultural strategy, strengthen community strategy, smart strategy, climate change strategy, as well as international relations policy framework. So, we can see our city, the Otatahi Christchurch, is a diverse, international, innovative, sustainable and resilient city. We will have a brilliant future. However, this is a changing world, particularly post-Covid pandemic, community and residents' expectation is far more than before. So, we face a bigger challenge in front of us. So, I wish the next time council, working together as a genuine team, one team, we can make that happen to provide the high quality of service to the people of Otatahi Christchurch to meet their needs. This is our original thought. This is our commitment, our determined and our promise. By the way, the, uh, this week is, uh, New Zealand Chinese Language Week. Also, Yani told me that it's a Tu'avana Language Week, but I cannot speak Tu'avana week, but I can speak a Chinese one. I want to speak a few paragraph, uh, Chi- Chinese language to appreciate all the people of Otatahi Christchurch. Finally, my motto is to give is more bliss than to receive. Thanks God for giving to me an opportunity for serving the people of Otataki Christchurch. Over the last fifteen years, as I mentioned before, over the past fifteen years, I have placed a high priority on the community, sometimes at the expense of my family. So, after the eighth of October, I will have more time to be with my family. I also will continue to care for the city and the community. I also will continue to care for the city and the community as a positive citizen. Thank you, norera. Te na koto, te na koto, te na tato, katoa.
Jimmy Chen. I remember Jimmy Chen coming to see me many years ago. Well, we actually often met because he was doing interpreting services for new migrants to the city. And I was a Member of Parliament and a Cabinet Minister at different times when Jimmy provided interpreting services for me. And I remember him saying that he wanted to run for council and he asked me for some advice. And I said, you've got to door knock. You've got to introduce, you've got to get your name out there, you've got to meet people. And I'll tell you what, he had a little notebook and he recorded all of the addresses that he had been door knocking on. And it was thousands, you know, literally thousands of doors that he had knocked on. And this isn't the only reason that Jimmy is beloved in his community where he has represented the city. He turns up, he turns up on occasions that matter to the community. And I think turning up makes a difference, Jimmy Chen. And I admire you, I always have done, for what you have always done for your community. You were born in Taiwan, your parents were from Sichuan, China. And you migrated to Christchurch in 1996. So yes, I did have to check the date yesterday, but you remind us every single citizenship ceremony, because every citizenship ceremony, Jimmy Chen has stood in front to welcome all of the delegates. And we found out last night that we have welcomed 10,000 new citizens in citizenship ceremonies throughout the time that I've been mayor. So Jimmy's been there longer than I have. And on each of those occasions, he welcomes people in Tareo and in the different languages that make up the diversity of the city that Christchurch is today. And I think the most memorable occasion that I will always hold with me was travelling with you to China in 2015 and travelling to Sichuan province, which was the first time that you had been to the province where your family was from. And that was an emotional connection for you. But for me, being present and hearing what that meant for you, that is something I will always hold dear. Your legacy is the city's multicultural strategy. You can be very proud of the fact that it is the first in the whole country, we're the first city to have a multicultural strategy. And you can be really proud of the role that you played in making that happen, working so closely with the diverse communities that make up the multicultural aspect of our city. And you've talked about what waste management means to you and the different roles that you have played there. But finally, I have to say that as champion for the southwest communities, campaigning hard for Mata Tiki Home Bee Centre, the new library, customer services and recreation and sports centre. Jimmy Chen, I'm going to say that there is going to be a front row seat reserved with your name on it for the official opening guaranteed here and now, agreed to by the Chief Executive. Well done, Jimmy, for your years of remarkable service to our council. We want you to have a happy retirement with your family. We know that you're putting your family first. But then I found out that you had been elected to your grandson's school board of trustees. So I'd like to end by saying congratulations on your continued service to our city. Deputy Mayor, Councillor Andrew Turner.
Ko te ahu pātaki te mōne tirune taku nākau. Ko Fakarāpo te moana e mahia ne aku ma harahara. Ko David Rawa, ko Sheila aku matua. No York, England aho. No East Yorkshire o kutipuna. Ke oh hina hau taku kaika inai a nei. E mi hiana ki na tahu o nenai, o Fakarāpo o noho neo. Ko Andrew Turner taku ingua. Te ahu pātaki is the mountain that speaks to my heart. Fakarāpo is the body of water that alleviates my worries. I acknowledge my father David, I acknowledge my mother Sheila. I'm from York, England, and my ancestors are from various villages of East Yorkshire. I now live in Littleton and I recognise the ancestral and spiritual landmarks of Fakarāpo, where I live. Twelve years ago, pretty much in the immediate aftermath of the first earthquake, of the Canterbury earthquake sequence, I was elected to the Littleton Mount Herbert Community Board in an election campaign that was interrupted by and that was overshadowed by earthquakes. Nine years ago, I was elected to council, notably by a margin of just five votes, to the council that had to get to grips with the council's finances, the council's insurance settlements, the council's relationship with governments and a massive rebuild of infrastructure as we recovered from those earthquakes. And six years ago, I became Deputy Mayor. A leadership role that I've loved, a role that I've had in two quite different councils. I was asked in an interview a few weeks ago what I enjoyed most about the role of Deputy Mayor. And my answer was that it's a role that allows you to become aware of and to get involved in so much amazing work which is going on in communities in all of the corners of our city. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Leanne for the confidence that she's shown in me in appointing me not just once but twice as her deputy. It's been a pleasure and it certainly isn't lost on me that it's been a huge privilege. I'd like to, at this point, acknowledge everybody who helped me get elected in the beginning and to everybody who supported me at that time and over the years. It's interesting to reflect on what I've learned in the twelve years that I've been elected. When I first came to the Littleton Mount Herbert Community Board table in the council service centre building now demolished on London Street that stood on the ground that's now the designated site for the Littleton Museum gifted by council, I had very little understanding of the Local Government Act, legoma, part A's, B's, C's, foreshadowed motions, long-term plan processes, standing orders, policies, strategies, coming from the private sector. And the relative simplicity of self-employment was a highly unusual environment for me. I also had to learn very quickly that the wheels of local government turn very slowly at times and that often the only way to achieve anything is by following due process, as frustrating and cumbersomely slow as that might sometimes be. All of those things that I had so little understanding of back in 2010 and are second nature to me. Tina Law noted in her analysis of council's performance in August this year, and I quote, "Andrew knows the inner workings of council inside out." I'm not quite sure how that happened, but I guess I've come a long way from being the guy who barely knew what a resolution of council was, let alone having the confidence to move one at the beginning of the twelve years I've been here. I've also learned a lot about governance. I'm fortunate in my time on council to have held a number of board roles and chairing roles. In the 2013 term, I chaired the Communities Housing and Economic Development Committee, affectionately known as CHED. I've chaired the Finance and Performance Committee. I deputy chaired the Finance Committee with Raf Mangia as Chair. And I've chaired various funding committees, hearings, panels, working groups and the like over the years as well. I've been fortunate to hold governance roles with the Destination Christchurch Trust, the Canterbury Development Corporation, Transition Holdings, Christchurch NZ, CCHL, the Otatahi Community Housing Trust, the Christchurch Foundation, the Okans Bay Museum and the Rod Donald Banks Peninsula Trust, all of which are opportunities I've only had as a result of being elected to council and in fact as a result of the confidence that my colleagues have had in me in appointing me to those roles. So thank you. Thank you for the trust, thank you for the opportunity and thank you for the experience. I've been so fortunate to work with some amazing committed people around this table in the nine years I've been here, people who work long hours, people who are totally committed to their communities, people who are here just because they want to be here and that want the best for the city and for the communities they represent. I'm not going to call out individuals, but I do want to thank everybody who's been part of all of the three councils I've been part of and all four of the community boards for the experiences I've had working with you, for the knowledge that I've gained and for some of the amazing memories that I'm going to take away. As a governance body, we would achieve so little without the staff that deliver on the decisions that we make and that support us in making them, that support the strategies that we put in place and the directions that we set. And I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge all of the staff of this organisation who we work with every day and who support our work as councillors. I particularly like to call out the Banks Peninsula Community Governance Team who do a great job in difficult circumstances. And I'd also like to give a special call out to my EA, Raywin. We've developed a particular way of working together which just seems to work. I've never been particularly good at being told what to do, but when Raywin tells me that I need to be somewhere or I need to prioritise a particular email or a particular piece of work, for once in my life, I do listen, sometimes. For nine years, I've been the elected councillor for Banks Peninsula, an area that's certainly got its challenges, it's huge, it's remote, it's made up of different communities with different needs and aspirations from each other and from the rest of the city. In the old dual wards model, each of the community boards had two councillors, except for Banks Peninsula where the councillor had to sit on two separate community boards. But being the councillor for Banks Peninsula has been a huge privilege. I can't think of a part of the city I'd rather represent. And I'd like to thank everyone on the peninsula who's made me so welcome, who's openly shared their knowledge and experience with me, who's been so generous, who's welcomed me into their home, into their community group, onto their patch. Everybody who's been very clear and very direct about what they want or need and peninsula people oft na. But that actually has made my job a whole lot easier. And I guess you come to lists at this point in the thinking. Things I'm proud of, the financial strategy that didn't require the sale of assets, the relationships I've built with Mana Fenua, particularly on Banks Peninsula, the work I did with Peter Skelton on the Littleton Port Recovery Plan, which held to the long aspirations of Nati Feke regarding the health of the Littleton Harbour able to be realised through the Fakauora Healthy Harbour Plan. Albion Square, Turunga, the Limwood Pool, the decision to save the town hall, the Antarctic Gateway work, the establishment of the housing trust and some good heritage outcomes that would not have happened without decisions made at this table, the Public Trust Building and the Peter Bevan Building on Manchester Street, now known as the Pink Lady. Things that we've dealt with, earthquakes, fires, floods, terror attacks, chlorination, the wastewater treatment plant fire, the pandemic. There have certainly been some challenges in the time I've been elected. But it's also good to focus on the good stuff, citizenship ceremonies, and last night's was a great example, civic awards ceremonies and all of the amazing relationships that I now hold that I didn't have and couldn't have even dreamed of having when I first came here. So this will be the last time I'll speak in this chamber, as a councillor at least. I always said I'd step down while I was enjoying what I was doing and whilst I felt I was still being effective. Nobody ever wants to outstay their welcome. Knowing when to step up is important, but knowing when to step down is just as important. And as the time since my announcement in February that I wasn't running for election again has passed, I'm increasingly more and more comfortable with that decision and increasingly more and more looking forward to life after council. It's time. There are some things I'll miss terribly about the role, the people, the camaraderie, the ability to help people, the privilege of being a representative of the communities I love and that I'm part of, the ability to influence, the ability to make positive change, to make decisions and to be involved in the whole breadth of the life of the city. And there are some things I will definitely not miss at all, which I'm not going to list. To finish, I'd like to thank Leanne, the mayor, for her sound leadership over the last nine years. I often say that we've been fortunate that Leanne has been the right person with the right skills at the right time, in the right place. And I'd like to thank Leanne for everything, Leanne, that you've done over the nine years. I'd like to thank all of the council and community board colleagues I've sat with over the years, past and present. I'd like to thank the staff, I'd like to thank those people in my life who are close to me, both personally and professionally and who have advised me, who have calmed me down, who've encouraged me to see sense at times, encouraged me to keep some balance in my life. Particularly my partner Glenn, who's been a constant support. Particularly those people who supported me and advised me when I was considering my options for the 2022 elections. You know who you are and thank you. I'd also acknowledge those others who are stepping down. And the amazing work you've done for young people, the amazing work you've done in our community and in your community of Horswell. Jimmy, the work that you've done with the multicultural communities and with that multicultural strategy is inspirational and something I'll always hang on to. And Anne and Jimmy, I've always enjoyed working with you. Leanne, I've already acknowledged, but thank you again for the opportunities that you've given me and for the opportunities that you've given and provided for the city. So that's a wrap, but you haven't seen the last of me yet. I'll continue to be involved in the life of the city and in the life of the peninsula, I'm not going anywhere. My feet stay firmly on the ground in Littleton and here in Christchurch. But now, with the even stronger connection to this place, to the people here, that the privilege of being elected for twelve years has allowed me to have. Norera, te na koto, te na koto, te na tato, katoa.
I knew one of them would get me, but Andrew, how can I thank you enough? I've always said that the ideal deputy is someone whose skills complemented your own. That's assuming you've got any skills, but I would assume some and look for complementary skill sets in others who have served as deputy. And you have been more than ideal. You have been utterly and completely dependable and reliable. And I know that I have been able to call upon you no matter what the circumstances and no matter the length of notice. And you really truly have been my trusted right hand. You stepped in for me when I had to face an extremely difficult time in my life and I will be forever grateful to you for what you have done for me personally. But you stepped in again this year at literally the eleventh hour. I think you were contacted on Friday to see if you would get on a plane in the very early hours of Sunday morning to go to Adelaide for a very important sister city visit, one that involved a significant delegation of people travelling from Christchurch to Adelaide and a substantial programme of work once there. And Andrew immediately said yes, he went for the visit. And although there was, you know, a sense of disappointment that I couldn't go, you know, I've formed a good relationship with the mayor of Melbourne. I was Melbourne, Adelaide, she'll never forgive me. But she, you know, the feedback that I had was that it was that you led the delegation brilliantly and the occasion was incredibly successful on every level. So thank you very much. And even last weekend, you welcomed people to the Transitional Cathedral, to the civic service to pay respects to the late Queen Elizabeth II and then travelled to Wellington to represent our city at the National Memorial Service. Not only have you been an outstanding Not only have you been an outstanding deputy mayor, but you are an outstanding chair, whatever role that you played, that you chaired, you always did so with dignity and respect for those that are sitting around you. And you led whoever was involved and guided the council through a range of very complex issues. And I'll just call out the long-term plan and the annual plan processes where you played such a significant role in your role as the head of Finance and Performance. Next week, you move on to the next chapter of your life and I think straight away pretty much into the Rod Donald Banks Peninsula Trust. And I think you've described it as your dream job and I can see why, because your home is Banks Peninsula and this is a really important role. And I could just see you and I was so excited when I heard that you'd got this role that I think, actually, that's the second time I've hugged you now. Because it was just that moment of feeling that this is that this is a perfect role for you to play. They're very lucky to have you, just as our city and our council has been lucky to have you as a loyal servant to the city over the years. So thank you very much on behalf of the council, on behalf of the city, on behalf of Banks Peninsula. And good luck for what I know will be a highly successful future. Yes, it's my turn. So I literally sat down and wrote a valedictory this morning. For those of you who know me well, you won't be surprised that I leave everything to the last minute. I often do. But it's actually been quite hard to think of the words to say because I wanted to start with thanking the person who gave me the confidence and strength to run for this role in the first place, but he isn't here. Now, but I did want you to know this, Rob didn't want me to run for mayor. He knew how devoted I was to my electorate and he was confident that I could continue to make a difference as a member of parliament and potentially as a cabinet minister again. That's why he didn't want me to run for mayor. What I found out though was that, well, I was told by a sitting councillor early in 2013 that he had included me in a poll that he was running to test his own candidacy for the mayoralty. I don't know that we should be naming names, but some people will know who it was. Now, the result that he got back from his pollster was that he was certainly within distance, having not announced that he was running. He was certainly within a winning margin. He was behind the sitting mayor, but he was within a winning margin and that they felt that they were confident that with a campaign, he could win the mayoralty. The poll results for me was that I was already well ahead right across the city. And I said to him, thank you very much, that's very kind of you to give me that information, but I'm not going to run. And I'll tell you what, I'm really happy to give you support for your campaign for the mayoralty, I'll back you 100%. So that was that was where things were left. Unfortunately, he pulled out for a number of reasons a couple of months later. And there was a lot of work that went on behind the scenes and I just want to acknowledge all of the people who helped me run for office. I have to say, running for office for local body elections, but particularly for the mayoralty, which is across the city, not focused on one ward or one electorate, it's right across the city. It's quite a different campaign than anything I'd ever been used to and the support I had was incredible. So I'd like to acknowledge all of those people and they all know who they are in that regard. Running independently was important for me. I had a long history as a Labour Member of Parliament, I'm a life member of the Labour Party, none of that's ever changed. But I had to put that to one side if for me, I was running for the mayoralty. I think the mayor has to sit in this place independent of being pushed or pulled in any particular direction from around the table. I think it's really important that the mayor reaches out and builds consensus where they can. But what was really important to me as well was having councillors that would support me transitioning from central government into the role of local government because I hadn't served in local government before. Vicky Buck was key to the local government background and particularly as a former mayor was invaluable to have her on board for the campaign. And Ref Mangi gave me the confidence in the financial space I needed. Now, as it turned out, I needed a lot more of that than I realised that I was going to need when we faced what we faced when we arrived and Andrew's already talked about that and I won't go over the details again, other than to remind people of the $400 million hole in the budget disguised as savings to be found and insurance claim nowhere near settlement and massive commitments regardless of the insurance settlement, which meant the public had huge expectations of what to expect and no idea that we had no budget to pay for it. That's why the first term was based on getting the books back in order and I think we were very successful in doing that and I thank all of those who contributed to making that happen. I knew back then that the mayor needed to be someone who could reach out and unite a divided city. We were a divided city. I demonstrated that as a cabinet minister, working on major reform on a bipartisan basis, working closely with the opposition spokesperson, who then became the minister, while I chaired the select committee completing the reforms I had started. That's my preferred model of working. It always has been. I've never wanted to take on major reforms without working in a collaborative way, whether it's been at council or in central government. It does mean compromise, but it also requires trust. And trust is something that's pretty hard to hold on to these days. I learned quickly that council was very different from government. Now, I remember asking John Key, who was the Prime Minister at the time, how it would be if cabinet papers were published a week before the cabinet meeting, there was ill-informed commentary on the decision you were going to make for an entire week, the cabinet meeting was livestreamed and then the one person who disagreed led the news that night. And I said, welcome to my world. Now, he was quite surprised and that's because central government doesn't understand local government. They don't understand that they can rely or a prime minister can rely on cabinet collective responsibility. A mayor can't. There is no such thing as collective responsibility other than by agreement. And agreement doesn't necessarily follow from a decision. Don't always get even unanimous ones that I'm expecting. I am not for one minute challenging the transparency and accountability that councils operate under. I think it's really important that the public can see in. But what the public need to see demonstrated in front of them is the depth and breadth of the study and the work that's gone into and lies behind making good decisions. Good decision-making requires people to be well-informed, well-briefed and well-understanding of all of the options. That's what the Local Government Act requires of us and not just for present residents, but for future generations as well. We have an intergenerational responsibility when we make decisions around this table. Now, I've always sought to find compromises, I've always sought those win-win outcomes that people have heard me refer to. And that's why I haven't always voted around the table. Sometimes people don't know that I haven't voted because there isn't a division called. But that's because the mayor needs to speak for the council decision regardless of whether they agree with it or not. That becomes the decision of the council and the mayor becomes the spokesperson for it. Looking back over nine years, bookended by the government's earthquake recovery model that put a government department in charge of major city functions and a global pandemic which has disrupted the ambitious plans we had for this term, we've had to face serious challenges and they've been spoken of, flooding, fires and of course, the tragedy of March 15. Although I'll never forget the 51 shuhara, their families and all those injured and affected by what they saw that day, it is the response that I will always hold dear to my heart and something that represents the pride that I have in our city in times of crisis, the way we come together and support each other no matter what. And that's why COVID has been hard, so hard. We have found ourselves at a time of need, at a time when we need each other more than ever, we've found each other, we've found ourselves isolated and that's what's made it so difficult. So having said all of that, I have felt a real sense of privilege, having been the mayor of the city where I was born and raised. I feel that I have made a difference and I want to thank all of the councillors who've supported me in my role over the past three terms. I also want to acknowledge the council staff of others here as well. It's a strange world that says that we have one employee. The number of people who've said, hi boss, in the lift, still makes me smile, I love it. But we around the council table do have responsibilities for the staff because what we say and what we do and what we post on our Facebook pages can impact heavily on those who can't answer back. I've always taken my governance role seriously until the other day. I walked into the planning team after I'd been on morning report, saying that I regretted that we couldn't notify a plan change to protect our trees. I said to them, I know that I'm not following process, but ever since I said that on the radio, I thought to myself, could we, could we do something? And they said, leave it with us. By close of play, I had an amendment which council approved the following day. I use it as an example of the people who walk into this building every day, determined to serve their fellow citizens in the best way they can. I thank you for everything you do for us as a city. Thank you to the team that makes up the office of the mayor, the CIR team, the media team, the legal team, for a whole lot of reasons. And I did want to mention Ian Thompson, who's not with us, but he was such a special person who I could look to over there and see his smile and know that I was doing something really bad or something really well. But to all of you, I've appreciated your support and thank you finally to the thousands of people who voted for me over the three terms and also those who've offered words of support and encouragement as I go. It has been truly humbling to feel the level of support that I have felt. When I started, I said I had enormous optimism for the city and I leave with exactly the same sense of optimism for our future. We have turned the corner. However, our experience over the last few years is a salutary reminder to everyone that you never know what lies around the corner. I wish the next mayor and council well and good luck to all my colleagues, putting themselves forward again to serve your communities and this amazing city and district. Norera, tena kato, tena kato, tena tato kato.
Tena kato, tena kato, tena kato kato. It is my absolute pleasure to be able to respond to Leanne's speech on behalf of staff. This is without a doubt an end of an era. Three terms, our mayor has served the city. And the council, as she has quite rightly said, as have others, is very different from the organisation that you mayor came into nine years ago. Then the council's ability to plan for the future was hampered by continued uncertainty about insurance recoveries and escalating earthquake recovery costs. The council also had to budget an extra $10 million to improve consenting services so we could regain accreditation as a building consent authority. And to think that was at a time where the rebuild was really coming to life and it's the biggest rebuild the country has ever faced. This was Leanne's starting point as mayor of Christchurch, following an incredibly high-profile career in government, both as a member of parliament and of course, as ministerial responsibilities too. And from day one, you have faced those challenges head-on, not ducking once in those situations. With this background, we can all reflect on the tremendous progress that you have led this city through. Your term as mayor started while Christchurch was in the early stages of the 40 billion rebuild and of course, the challenges that that presented. Coupled with the city, we have confronted major flooding, obviously that flooding worsened by the earthquakes, the fires, the tragedy of the mosque attacks and of course, the pandemic that Leanne quite rightly spoke about. It will have, it is undoubtedly one of the most difficult periods in Christchurch's history, but we had a lady at the top of the heap who led that from the front and both in tough times and not so tough times too. You can proudly say that Christchurch is now not only the oldest city, but the newest in New Zealand. Staff who have worked for you can recite your priorities, every one of which is about making the city a better place for our residents. In every issue that comes before you, your first query is often, and I'm sure the members will recognise this straight away. Have we and how have we communicated? Have we listened? Have we involved? Don't just consult, engage. Think like a resident. And undoubtedly, one of my favourites, which Leanne told me, I think in week one. If you're writing to a resident or anyone in fact, say in the first sentence, why they're actually getting the letter, don't bury it in paragraph eight. Because by then, of course, the person's given up reading the damn thing. You describe your role as being here to serve and you are the consummate public servant and you have been over 30 years and undoubtedly will continue to be in whatever you do. And you have outlined how much we've achieved through your councils of the three years. So I thought I'd name a few. Turanga, which you speak of so eloquently all the time and every opportunity and quite rightly so. The community centres and libraries in Sumner, Hallswell, Bishopdale and Heathcote, the restoration of the town hall and the repairs to the art gallery, the review of the district plan when we got it back. Taora, Te Po Toto, Na Poonuai, progress on roads, water supply and of course, the progress on the metro sports facility and now to Kahaa too. And now, to Kahaahtu. You can look back with pride on so much. And I think undoubtedly, I know you have great pride in how you set up the mayor's task force when the flooding hit the city. And that involved our residents right on the coalface. You also recognise the need for the city to build resilience in the face of an ever-changing environment. And one of your first tasks as mayor was to sign off our successful nomination to be part of the Rockefeller Foundation's 100 resilient cities network. Again, your message. There are no such things as natural disaster. There are natural hazards, and the disaster is when they impact on people and their communities. And you have been recognised as a world leader in disaster resilience recovery and sharing all of that learning in Christchurch on a world stage. And I have no doubt that will continue. Many staff here are in the room, and I know they're watching as well. And they will miss you greatly. They talk about your intellect, about everything from planning and legal matters to civil defence, how your solution focused, and always about your passion for this city and its communities. Your commitment and undoubted joy when you do the citizenship ceremonies and when you welcome migrant communities just shines out of you. And it's a lovely thing to see. You have earned mine and our staff's admiration and respect by walking the talk at all levels. And I have walked the streets in the city centre and elsewhere with Leanne. And complete strangers come up to her and say, "You're doing a great job." People she doesn't even know literally just walk up to her. And she's always very gracious in those situations. We know it's been a difficult time, in many ways, both professionally and personally. And the loss of your beloved husband, Rob, after his illness was devastating for you. But again, you earned our love and respect and admiration on how you carried on. Thank you, Leanne, for everything that you've done for this place, for this council and for the residents. And we wish you the very best for your next chapter of your life and best wishes for the future. Thank you.
It's not quite over yet, ma'am.
Oh.
Of course, it was over. We had a whip round, as councillors often do. Here is a gift and a card and another bunch of flowers as a token of our appreciation of your leadership and everything you've done for the council, for the city, and that you've been a great colleague to work with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kia whakari'a te tapu, kia wātia ai te ara. Kia turuki fa kataha ai, kia turuki fa kataha ai. Hōmēi huiē, tai kīē. For the last time, I declare the meeting closed.